Good evening and thank you for your presence at the Board of Education regular meeting. This meeting is livestreamed, this public meeting is livestreamed at the Ashkosh Media YouTube Are we in compliance with the open meeting law notification?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Selagi.
Here.
Right.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
Carlin.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Karin.
Here.
Peschel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next up, I would like to invite up Sammy Lieb and Sidney Ziegler. Ziegler, thank you. These young ladies will be, they go to Carl Treiger Middle School and they'll be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would ask everyone in the room to rise and be part of the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is, I would say as a board member and speaking on behalf of the Board is one of our favorite moments of the year, is when we have opportunities to have a full room where we get to recognize some of our most prominent and growing leaders in our, in our, in our schools. And so, go ahead, Mr., Dr. Jones is gonna, is going to read, sorry. We are at the part of our agenda where we have an Employee of the Year recognition. We held a dinner, or kind of a meet and greet for them at Tipler, and then after that, they were recognized by their peers there, and then here they're, they're going to be recognized by the Board as well as to the whole community through, through our livestreaming as well. So, Dr. Jones is going to read a description of each Employee of the Year, and then Dr. Davis and I will present them with a plaque and a picture.
Thank you, President Peschel. Again, we have over 1,200 dedicated employees that work for our district every day, and tonight, we are excited to recognize eight of them that have demonstrated exceptional work and leadership in our, in our school system. The first I'd like to call up is Kim Lattin, a fifth grade teacher at Emmeline Cook Elementary School. Kim? Kim has served the Ashkosh Area School District for over 20 years. She is a fun, engaging, ambitious, ambitious teacher who cares deeply for her students. Kim creates a unique bond with each student she has, and any student that has been fortunate to have Kim as a teacher will say she made them feel loved and gave them a place to belong. Her passion for kindness and acceptance is passed on to her students, and as a result, a family is created in her classroom, specifically the fifth grade Frog Family, as they are nicknamed. These relationships, along with her high expectations, have resulted in her students wanting to be the best that they can be. Kim has also been instrumental in leading Emmeline Cook as a PBAIS school, and is passionate about sharing her belief that teaching students' behavior and social expectations are just as crucial as teaching reading and math. This is evident in her own classroom, but also in the entire E. Cook School community. Kim is also a leader in our district, having served on various district committees and led many school initiatives and discussions. Currently, she serves as the Social Emotional Learning Leadership Team and is an advocate for meeting the social and emotional needs of our students district-wide. Kim's reputation as a highly effective and engaging teacher has led many teachers and administrators to seek out her for support for input on instruction, behavioral, and SEL strategies, and classroom management. She is also well-known at the university level as an effective cooperating teacher who desires her clinicians and student teachers to be successful, as she's been advocating for change to better prepared teachers entering our field. Kim is the epitome of an effective educator. She loves teaching, loves her students, and loves learning. Her ambition and hard work has positively affected over two decades of students in the Ashkosh Area School District. Please help me recognizing Kim Lattin.
And if anybody else wants to come up and take pictures, please do. Our next recipient for the Elementary Teacher of the Year is Lisa Bruhl, Early Childhood Program Support and Ready for Learning. Lisa?
Lisa Bruhl is our Ashkosh Early Learning Program Support Teacher, supporting our district's special education staff who work with our youngest learners and their families. With more than 26 years of working in special education, Lisa's expertise is invaluable, an invaluable asset to Ashkosh Early Learning and the entire Ashkosh Area School District. As a leader within our Special Education Department, Lisa has provided countless trainings and coaching sessions for staff around best practices that include opportunities for collaborative discord, clear strong examples of what we're trying to move towards and accomplish, opportunities for staff to practice new learning or procedures, and opportunities for staff to provide feedback about what is and is not working. Lisa also builds relationship with other professionals within the field, which allows Ashkosh Early Learning to be no more than an email or phone call away from collaborating with other experts. Lisa regularly participates on committees statewide related to early childhood special education and maintains positive relationships with professional experts within both the Department of Public Instruction and CISA. Lastly, Lisa's connections made with other special education professionals across the country through her volunteer work with conscious discipline allow our district to tap into collaborative opportunities around social emotional practices and direct instruction of executive functioning skills. Lisa's work with conscious discipline and verbal de-escalation has had a significant impact in how we support students within Ashkosh Early Learning and the rest of the district. Her focus on supporting the student rather than behavior and verbally de-escalating situations helps to keep both students and staff safe. The Ashkosh Area School District is fortunate to have Lisa's expertise and gifts as she works with students, families, and as students, staff, and families at such an impactful time in our children's lives. Congratulations, Lisa.
And one more. Very good. Congratulations. Next up, we're going to move to the Secondary Teacher of the Year, and first up is Lori Motor, English teacher, Ashkosh West High School.
Lori Motor's 20-plus years of service to Ashkosh comes with wisdom, sureness, and a willingness to help others in need of guidance. She has an incredible ability to meet all students where they are, and then inspire and push them to do more than they've ever thought possible. Lori teaches English I and English I honors, and is a master at modifying materials and lessons for every level of every student. This results in challenging literature being at the heart of the curriculum, and Lori finding ways for all students to access it, even Shakespeare. Lori has also helped launch the careers of many educators as she regularly hosts clinicians and student teachers, often giving up her lessons, lunches, and free periods to mentor them every year. In addition, Lori has always worked with a special education co-teacher for sections of English I that were using that model. Her partnerships have been incredibly successful and long-lived, providing consistency for some of West's highest needs students. Lori is also a natural facilitator and gentle leader. On a more personal level, she is a source of emotional support for both students and staff. Lori selflessly gives her time to listen with empathy. One of her colleagues had this to say about her, quote, "When I think of how much Lori has supported our school community, I'm reminded of the quote, 'Helping one person might not change the world, but it could change the world for that one person.'" I know I'm just one of many at Ashkosh West whose world has been changed each day by the kindness of Lori Motor. Congratulations, Lori.
Another Secondary Employee of the Year is Megan Mueller, math teacher at Ashkosh West High School. Megan?
Megan Mueller is dedicated to equity and ensuring all students learn and grow at the highest levels. She brings out the best in students, even those who are often difficult to reach. She does whatever it takes to ensure each student gets what he or she needs to be successful. She adapts on the fly, maintains communication with students, their families, and other staff, and sacrifices prep and personal time to provide needed interventions. The key to Megan's and her students' success is the emphasis she places on positive relationships. She is beloved by the students of Ashkosh West because she makes them feel valued and cared about. She cares deeply about preserving students' dignity as they work through difficult math topics, and instills a growth mindset in students by helping them believe that with effort and perseverance, all students can succeed. Because of this, anybody walking into her classroom will observe students of all ability levels engaged in deep thinking and productive collaborative work. Megan's positive impact on student extends beyond the walls of her classroom. Megan is truly a teacher leader at Ashkosh West. She's an active member on committees focused on improving the school, including the Learning for Equity Team and the Guiding Coalition, and she was formerly a member of the Wildcat Way Team. Her valuable contributions are key to the continuous improvement of the culture and climate at Ashkosh West. On top of all that, Megan takes on additional responsibilities such as volunteering for special events, working at athletic events, and serving as a lunch supervisor. She goes above and beyond for her students and coworkers, is kind, approachable, and passionate about teaching. Congratulations, Megan.
Moving on to the Support Staff Employee of the Year, Matthew Bell. Matthew?
As a special education para-professional, the love and hard work that Matt Bell pours into every day with students is second to none. Students at Washington Elementary love Matt. He is always there to celebrate them, give high fives, hug them, wipe away tears, have fun with them, and make jokes, but also hold them accountable and help them to be the very best versions of themselves that they can be. The way Matt is able to build relationships with kids is admirable. They trust him, confide in him, and they know he believes in them. They're also, they are also always so excited to see him. In fact, when walking the halls at Washington, you'll often hear "Mr. Bell, Mr. Bell, Mr. Bell," as students try to get away from him in the hallway, and of course, he knows every student by name. You can always catch Matt joyfully celebrating any and all the student wins. The pride he has when he talks about their achievements, the strides students make, or any obstacles that he is able to witness students overcome can bring a smile to anyone's face. Matt truly cares about Washington students and wants them to reach their full potential, and each child that he works with knows it. While Matt is a special education para, he also is helping the regular education students when they need a little extra push. One of his favorite times of the day is to read with students who need extra one-on-one reading time to help them become more fluent readers. Lastly, Matt strives for his peers and his students to be taken care of. He is always willing to jump in and to help in situations that may not be in his specific job, but often being, helping without being asked. Washington would not be where it is without Matt's consistency, care, and compassion that he brings to work every single day. Congratulations, Matt.
Also in the Support Staff Employee of the Year category, Nancy Levecq, Media Assistant at Oakwood Elementary. Nancy?
Nancy has worked in the Ashkosh Area School District for over 15 years. She is the definition of service above self and is often referred to as the Jill of all trades. At Oakwood, she is first and foremost the school's media assistant. She knows books and students inside and out. She is a superb relationship builder and not only provides media services, but a safe place for all students. She is also the first to greet students off the bus in the morning and is happily outside and bundled up despite the weather. Nancy exudes positive energy and passes it on. She can't help but feel happy when you are around her, and if you can catch her, she will offer you a smile every time. She offers her services to many, so she is a very busy person in and outside of school. Nancy is the head of Oakwood's Plastic Recycling Program, responsible for helping to keep over 300 pounds of plastic out of the landfill. She shares her passion for recycling with students and adults, and at one point even dropped up, dressed up as Super Recycler for Halloween. This year, she has graciously partnered with the Ashkosh North High School Community's recycling program and has served as a mentor to high school and elementary students alike. Nancy also is a talented gardener. She shares her skills at Oakwood by planting and weeding throughout the year in the school's landscaping and garden beds. She partners with classroom teachers to get students out and engaged in this work as well. She teaches students the importance of taking care of our earth and what it can return to us with this work. Most recently, Nancy has been working to get a sewing club going at Oakwood Elementary. Not only does Nancy physically work in the center of, work in the center of Oakwood Elementary School, but she puts others in the center of her heart. Nancy lives and breathes by helping others. She goes out of her way every day for students, staff members, and our Ashkosh community. Congratulations, Nancy.
We also have a special award. This is the award for First-Year Teacher of the Year, a person that's their first year in the teaching profession, and we'd like to bring Nicole Beck, cross-categorical teacher at Ashkosh West High School. Nicole Beck is a first-year teacher who one would assume has been on the job for nearly a decade. Nicole works as a cross categorical, can say that twice, cross categorical co-English II teacher who also teaches her own section of English II, has a classroom resource, and took an overload to help teach an English class in West's Encompass Program. Nicole's tireless work ethic, her drive and motivation, and her unrelenting positive attitude have made Ashkosh West an even better place to work. On top of the classes she teaches and the countless hours she spends preparing lessons, modifying assignments, or coming up with pre-teaching and re-teaching strategy, Nicole has, also has a caseload of 12 students who are seniors and in the transitioning phase of graduating. The IEP paperwork can be difficult for even the most experienced of veterans of teachers, but Nicole has exceeded expectations in making sure her senior students are always supported, doing their work, and moving towards graduation day. Nicole has also been working with students in the district's E-Academy Riverside Program and New Start. Nicole takes time out of her week to meet with all of these students to make sure they know what they need to do and to answer any questions that they may have. Nicole's biggest strength and asset is taking the time to build relationships with her students. On top of all of the academic success Nicole has had, she has also done a great job getting involved in extracurricular activities as well. She set up and built a successful snow blast team in her first year of teaching. She has also volunteered her time to help with decorating and chaperoning dances and plans to help coach girls soccer and volleyball. Seeing a new teacher take such an initiative to support her students and in and out of the classroom is extraordinary. Nicole is everything you want in a teacher, and she's only just begun. Congratulations. And our last recipient is the Administrator of the Year, Scott Johanknick, Principal, Scott, now Johanknick, may well be the most kind, caring, and insanely positive six-foot-seven elementary school principal you will ever meet. Known as Mr. J, Scott has a way of making everyone feel welcome, cared about, and heard. Under Scott's leadership, students at Oaklawn have a sense of belonging and know what they are expected to do as well, and staff members know that what they are supposed to, are supported and capable of meeting the needs of all of their students. As principal, Scott is extremely visible in his school community. Every day, he spends time making sure students know they are loved, whether he is out greeting students on the buses, dancing with students before school starts to energize and welcome them, or simply popping into a classroom to say good morning. Scott is also visible at all school functions, from PTO meetings to being the DJ at school dances, to dressing up in costume and then dancing across the stage as Frosty the Snowman. That's a very large Frosty. To doing the backstroke dressed as a giant pink baby shark for the school's musical concerts. Again, he shows he cares for the well-being of students and staff by always being visible and having a smile on his face. On a more serious note, Scott never falters in his ability to lead through listening and keeping calm. He is not afraid to sit right on the carpet with a student to model self-regulation and listening skills, and he is always available to staff whenever they need him. Scott also encourages his staff to, quote, "reach further," whether that be through professional development and training or finding new ways to innovate in the classroom. Scott's enthusiasm to help others and encourage positivity extends beyond the school day. He participates in many PTO functions, does landscaping for the school, spent part of his Christmas break dropping off donations to families, gives of his personal time to make sure students can safely get home, and so much more. These are just a few of the many ways Scott's kindness overflows into the community, and it is clear that Scott's genuine positivity and love for those around him is ingrained in what makes the Oaklawn School Community so special. Scott's dedication, kindness, work ethic, and professionalism makes others want to be better. Congratulations, Scott. So, Board members behind you on the wall, our employees that we just recognized, they will be up there for the entire year for, as our other staff members come through here for workshops and trainings, they'll be able to be recognized there as well. Also like to point out Katie Neiman, our Director of Communications, for her hard work in helping make this program possible. So, thank you, Katie. So, one last thank you to all of the recipients for your work, your inspiration, and the changes that you provide our children, not just our children, but also the people that you work with and ultimately our community. So, thank you for all of that. I do know that our Board meetings are extremely exciting, and I don't really want to have a room of public educators and public, public education supporters leave, but I do recognize that you guys have life outside of here, and many of you have worked all day, so you are welcome to leave and to go, and if you want to do that now, that is the time, and we will provide you that time to do that. So, thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have the approval of the agenda. This is an opportunity for any member of the Board to suggest any changes to either the position of certain items on the agenda in general. So, is there any changes that the Board wishes to make to the agenda?
No.
Seen, none. Okay. Then, there is no motion to approve the agenda because we have offered no changes. Next up, we have Board Administrator Reports. We start with, with mine. As we started to do last month is, the Board President is beginning to, in their report, will recognize those that are retiring from the Ashkosh Area School District and such. So, I will read their name, their role, their current school, and, and the year that they started their service with us. So, I would like to congratulate Tracy Crowley, a Building Assistant and Media Assistant at Roosevelt Elementary School. She has been impacting the
Assistant at Roosevelt Elementary School. She has been impacting the students of the Oshkosh Area School District since 2002. Wayne, or Tony Gerhards, this one's personal. I had Mr. Gerhards as a teacher, and probably Mr. Carnes did as well. So, great impact. Wayne, Tony Gerhards, is a health teacher at Oshkosh West and has been with Oshkosh West since 1987. So, LaStia Griffiths is a Health Assistant LPN at South Park Middle School and has been with the district since 1995. Diane Keel, Supervisory Teacher Assistant in the WIT program with the district since 2017. Deborah Nelson, Family and Consumer Science Teacher, Oshkosh North High School, and has been with the district since 2006. Jennifer, Jenna Rindo, is an ESOL teacher primarily at Jefferson and Reed Elementary Schools and has been with the district since 1995. As I indicated, it's a great feat to spend, you know, your career in such a great school district, impacting the lives of students around you, their families, and as well as their coworkers. And so, we recognize them for their time and their energy and their expertise that they brought to the Oshkosh Area School District. So, I would like any member of the board, if they wish to indicate any accolades for any of these persons, that they have the ability to do that. Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I want to wish all of these retirees a long, healthy, and happy retirement. They've dedicated their professional lives to our school district, its students, and the community for many, many years. And for two of these, I had the good fortune of working with them when I was employed full-time in the district, starting as a curriculum director. And that would be Tony Gerhards. Tony served on a number of health curriculum committees, was always forward-thinking, always put students first. He's probably better known in some circles as the head baseball coach at Oshkosh West High School, and he had some really nice press recently in one of the local newspapers and received quite a few accolades from fellow baseball coaches. So, I was told this retirement was coming, and I told him he'd have to get a majority vote of the board. So, don't mean to put any pressure on. And Jenna Rindo, Jenna joined the, what was then the ESL team, now the ESOL team, to teach second language learners. She too has always put students first and very dedicated to those students, their families, and the program in general. She, all of these people will be missed. And personally, I will miss Jenna and Tony and their contributions to our district. Thank you.
I guess one of the fun things of being on the board in a community that you grew up in is this kind of, you know, when a teacher that you, you know, had when you were at West, not only that, but he graduated from West. He graduated with my uncle. So, you know, it's just kind of, it's really special to see that and to see the dedication that he's given to our community. And it's, I wish him well, wish all of them well.
I'd like to make some short comments about Tony Gerhards. As a graduate of Oshkosh West, I had the opportunity to learn from him as a teacher and as a coach. So, and he's best known for being the baseball coach, first baseball coach for decades, but he was also the JV football coach at one point as well. And I'm pretty sure that I still, and he'll laugh at this, I'm pretty sure I still owe him some laps around the field. So, but, and so, he molded me in that, in that respect as well. But later on, in my professional world, I worked for an organization that served persons with intellectual and developmentally, were intellectually and developmentally disabled. And I was offered the opportunity to be a guest in several of his health classes to talk about those, the persons and the experiences that they went through in life. So, and just in general, some, also some discussion about the use of people-first language and recognizing people first, and then recognizing that they're, that they're not defined by their abilities, that they are people first. So, so those were professional opportunities that I believe were well warranted. He provided great opportunities. So, I know we've talked about Tony a lot here, but every single one of these people have contributed greatly throughout their time with the district and have impacted lives and the people, lives of children, the people around them. So, again, thank you for your time and effort and expertise, but I hope that you find a great deal of time in your personal life and your extra time to do what now inspires you later in life. So, do that well and do that happily. So, thank you for that. Next up, and the one thing that I also wanted to recognize, and I have to do a better job of this, is recognizing components of our staffing around our district. And so, no school, and even this building, would run without the administrative assistants that do all this work behind the scenes to make it happen. So, today just happens to be Administrative Assistance, School Administrative Assistance Day. And we, as a board, want to recognize Sheri Wertz, who is Dr. Davis' executive assistant, and Eileen Fitzpatrick, who works behind the scenes for us for our meetings. So, without them, we don't get to do our work as well as we do. We don't have the information as much. And our schools definitely, you know, work and function because of the role of administrative assistance. And so, thank you all for that. I hope that you hear that and that the word spreads that the board surely supports your work in the district. So, I have no other contributions from my president's report, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. Great. Thank you. First of all, we'll start with Oshkosh North students recently made ceramic bowls to help raise funds for Empty Bowls, a charity event to help fight hunger in our community. About 15 students and several local artists made over 40 bowls for the cause. So, congratulations to everyone involved. Looks like a neat event. In addition, the Wave Robotics Team, in addition to the Wave Robotics Team winning the Excellence in Engineering Award at Regionals, Oshkosh West Senior Hannah Chung also won the Dean's List Award for the Highest Individual Student Award Given by First. So, congratulations to Hannah. Additionally, Oshkosh West student Iri Ulrich received first place in the Solo Serious Acting category at the State Forensics Tournament. West had an amazing showing overall with numerous students receiving awards. So, congratulations to the forensics team at West. Students in our Adaptive Physical Education Class at Oshkosh North recently had the opportunity to go ice skating out at the YMCA. You can see some of those fun pictures there. For some students, this was the first time ice skating. So, thanks for, everybody for providing that neat opportunity. Box Dean Vulcan, the combined First Lego League Team from Carl Trager, Elps, Perry Tippler, and Oakwood, was selected as Wisconsin's nominee for the Global Innovation Award. The team competed against 120 nominees from around the globe. The team's invention, Falcon Fire, has been selected as a top 20 finalist. The team will travel to St. Louis this summer to attend the Global Innovations Award Ceremony. So, congratulations to that team and continued their hard work. We had fourth graders at Washington Elementary recently studied informational writing. They learned about something they were interested in. After they drafted, edited, and revised their writing, they created an artifact using found materials based on their interest. Then, they worked together, creating a video showcasing all that they had learned. So, congratulations on all the hard work from our students and staff over at Washington Elementary. Reed Elementary students were busy helping our environment on Earth Day. Third graders took a walking field trip to Rainbow Memorial Park where they picked up trash and were able to enjoy the beautiful weather and play outside together. Kindergartners spent Earth Day picking up trash around the school building. So, thanks for your service, Reed Elementary. And in conclusion, the series of events that I've had over the last couple of weeks, specifically, I'll just do a shout-out today to the Leadership Oshkosh Class of 2022. The best class, I'm told the best class to go through the Leadership Oshkosh Program. But I just want to thank all of my colleagues from across Oshkosh in different leadership capacities and our organizers for that great event. It's been a great opportunity for me to be able to network with leaders across, across Oshkosh and be able to get some up-close perspectives on a lot of our services that are provided in our communities. So, thank you, Board, also for the opportunity to let me participate in that. So, and that concludes the superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
On the agenda lists that there's a Board Listening Session Report from April 13th of 2022. We did not have any attendance from the public on that, and so there was no topics of conversation to report back. So, in essence, there is no report. And we have no district administrator supplemental reports. We do have some other reports from committee chairs. I believe that we are prepared for committee report from Facilities and Finance as well as the Legislative Committee. So, Dr. Herzog, can you lead us with the, with the Facilities and Finance Report?
Sure. I'd be happy to. The Facilities and Finance Committee meeting met on Thursday, April 12th. Members present were Beth Wyman, Chris Wright, Dr. Gunlock, Linda Piran, Drew Nihans, and Kelly Handy also attended. We had several lengthy discussions. I'm not going to read every word of this report. I'm just going to paraphrase. One of, the initial agenda item was the future use of the current Merrill Elementary and Middle School site. Mr. Nihans had informed the committee that questions were surfacing on the future use of the Merrill School site. He provided a design that had been drawn for the area to be used for green space, since green space is in high demand and is limited. With the reduction in schools, there will be a need to have areas to use for middle school athletics. The idea of crossing busy Jackson Street to use East Hall would not be a safe solution. The actual building dates back to 1900 and was named after James Merrill, a mayor of Oshkosh for one year who died unexpectedly. There will be a meeting coming up with the Jackson Neighborhood Association, I believe it's next week, Monday, May 2nd, to talk about the new schools and plans for the space. The current site would be needed for not only physical education classes, but also after-school and weekend and summer athletic activities. Carl Trager, West Parking Lot Overlay and Lighting Renovation meant that we were looking at a request that is on tonight's agenda under the Consent Resolution to approve roughly $450,000 for new lighting and poles, as well as other repairs to the parking lot. One of the items that drew a lot of attention from the committee was the Brewing Futures Cafe Program. Each high school currently has a cafe program, which is thriving. It's a program where special, students with special needs are provided an opportunity to work in their school's own cafe and store to help them learn communication and work skills. There has been a food truck obtained, which Mrs. Piran was a great advocate for. The truck will be ADA accessible, the first of its kind in the country. Federal grants were used to purchase the truck, and the DPI is thrilled with this idea. The truck is heavily booked already. It'll be at EAA Food Truck Varieties, the Farmer's Market, and so on, providing opportunities for the community and potential employees, ployers rather, to see students with special needs in a working environment displaying what great employees they can be while providing the students with an authentic teaching and learning environment that can enhance their communication and work skills. There was a request for a 1.0 FTE staff person to help run and manage this program, as well as the two cafes in the two high schools. We also talked about wage scale adjustments. We know that we are behind as a system in terms of compensation for several of our employee groups, including food service and the OPEA, or the Oshkosh Paraprofessional Education Association. And so, there was a request to increase the wages for the LPNs and the CMAs, since the district is having trouble finding people at the rates we are currently paying. Mr. Nihans will continue to review the salary compensation for these groups to see how we can more effectively raise the wages in order to keep and retain our staff, which is one of our strategic goals. We also talked about increasing coaching position pay, as well as increasing pay for non-athletic events, for such things as music and drama. Game workers is another group of people we looked at in terms of raising that pay. It has not been raised for many, many years. And so, that will be coming back in the future. We also talked about the Human Resources Workflow System, which Mr. Nihans noted is an area of concern for the business office and Human Resources Office. And they have been working together on a plan for technology and greater automation. So, they are looking at a couple of systems, and they will be coming back with a recommendation for purchase to the board in the future. It's part of next year's budget and will not require, actually, it won't require a separate board vote because under board policy, any expenditure over $150,000 requires a specific vote by the board, and this would be under that amount. Dr. Nih, or Mr. Nihans also gave us a 2022, 23 budget update. He noted that the district is currently showing a small deficit in the budget right now, which is not unusual at this point because there are many unknowns with enrollment and staffing areas. Work will continue in an effort to tweak opportunities within the remainder of the budget. However, he feels there are no real concerns at this time with the numbers. One bright note in the area of the budget is the fact that we expect that our numbers of students enrolled in our 4K program will be on the rise, as Mrs. Shendel is noting in the back of the room right now. Mr. Nihans also provided a budget variance report noting that the current budget is tracking at a little more than a million, which will widen as it gets closer to the end of the month. Food service currently has a $750,000 surplus. The breakfast program will continue next year because it's good for students, putting students first. And beginning next month, dental and medical plan information will be added to his report. The district embarked on a self-funding program for medical insurance, and we are doing well at this time. Prescription costs, for example, are currently half of what was spent in the past. So, that was the report. The next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for May 19th at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. The Legislative Committee met on Thursday, March 31st. In attendance was myself, Dr. Herzog, Mr. Wright, Dr. Davis, Dr. Gunlock, and Mr. Nihans. One of the things we like to do as part of our committee members is attend the CSU 6 Legislative Breakfast. Of course, any, any school board member can attend the breakfast, but we began, we began the meeting by talking about some of the things that we heard at the last legislative meeting, breakfast at CSU 6. We were talking about SRO officers and how many we have and how they are funded. We are very fortunate that we are able to have our, we have five SRO officers, and four of them are funded. We pay 50/50 in conjunction with the Oshkosh Police Department, and we have one position that is paid for from Fund 10. We also discussed the last breakfast, the needs for an increase in special education funding. As our budgets shrink, our special needs continue to rise. And we noted that at the Wasby Delegate Assembly that we are lobbying for a 90% increase in special needs funding. We also, oh, before I move on, the next CSU 6 Legislative Breakfast is on Friday, May 6th, and I would highly encourage any school board members to have an interest in networking with our local legislators to attend. We also heard an update from Dr. Davis regarding his ongoing discussions with UW-Oshkosh about getting paid student teaching. And if you've been watching the headlines, we have had some really good legislation come through that will support having our student teachers get paid. We also We also talked about the voucher program on getting our breakdown of the tax impact on our tax bill next year. Mr. Nihans is working on a graphic that he would like to have included into the tax bill next year, which will break down exactly how school vouchers work and how it impacts the taxpayers. So, we are making progress on that, which is very exciting. Our next meeting, we will be assigning new legislator contacts. We have a new committee, so we will be having people sign up to choose which legislator they would like to liaison with, and we will discuss inviting legislators to our schools and events in a more active basis now that things are somewhat back to normal. Our next meeting, it says here, is May 12th, but I believe we changed that on Monday to May 19. Is that correct? Yes. So, our next meeting is May 19th at 8:30 a.m. Thank you. No, 8:00 a.m., sorry. Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Thank you. 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I have education as well.
Go for it.
So, we met on Thursday, April 7th. Myself, Anis Wyman, Misalaji, Dr. Herzog, Dr. Davis, Julie Conrad, Dr. Brown, and then we had representatives from the schools, Renee Schumacher, Deb Hulsher, Alex Peester, Blair Draxler, Samantha Benke, Bobby Cummings, and Linda Kuhaert. Just want to give a shout out to all of them for all their hard work. So, we are looking at reviewed K-12 standards, adoption for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Music. Standards specify what students should know, be able to do at grade level, provide goals for each, for teaching and learning to promote learning, promote equity as every student works toward the same goal of meeting the specific standard, and help students to use what they have learned beyond the classroom. Standards are reviewed on an annual basis, and should there be a change in curriculum and accompanying request for resource adoption typically accompanies it. For the 2021-22 school year, new Wisconsin state standards were reviewed by each department for English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Music for possible adoption. So, one of the items to vote on tonight is the adoption of the update for curriculum. I'm not going to go through all the different items that we reviewed at that meeting, but that is all in our board packet tonight for what we went through at that meeting and what we're going to be voting on, so.
Thank you. Is there any other, any other types of reports that any board member would like to provide related to their engagement? Next, we are moving on to the non-agenda-related public forum. I just kind of want to read, we do have some, we do have two individuals signed up for non-agenda-related public forum and no individuals for the agenda-related public forum. So, before we get into that, I'm just going to read kind of our rules of what needs to be followed in order to address the board. So, a total of 45 minutes during the meeting will be allotted for non-agenda, agenda-related public forum. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes to speak. When addressing the board, please clearly and concisely state your name and full address and the topic that you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson of a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Number two, please clearly state the matters of concern. Number three, please limit your comments to two minutes. And number four, please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to be directed to the appropriate administrator. First up, we have Mr. Matt Took. Please come on up to the table. Provide us your name one more time and your address and your comments, please.
Yeah, hi. My name is Matthew Took. I'm at 1679 Thornton Drive. A few months ago, my son brought home a book. It's called All American Boys, and as I looked through it, I noted it was full of vulgarity. So, I called this teacher, and I spoke with the teacher, and I asked her a question, when did this become common, that we've just sort of accepted that this is part of children's books? And she said she noticed it about 10 years ago. So, I decided to do a little research. 20 to 30 years, 20 to 30 years ago, this never would have been acceptable. But at some point along the way, the schools gave up on protecting the innocence of our kids, so I decided to take it upon myself. There's been nationally an uproar about sexually explicit books in libraries at schools. And so, I decided to do a little bit of research to see if the Oshkosh School District had any of these such books. Well, I was sickened and I was choked up when I saw that we have just about every one that parents' groups had indicated were sexually explicit and vulgar. And so, I brought one example with me today of a book. It's particularly a bad example of a book that's available at a library. It's called Gender Queer. And if you want to see here, it says, "For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into my, front of my pants and manipulating the bulge." It goes on.
25 seconds.
To show a depiction of oral sex. I want each member of this school district, of this board, to come out and tell us where you stand on sexually explicit materials for children. And if you're feeling embarrassed right now, or if you're feeling shamed, you ought to, and shame on the Oshkosh Area School District. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Took. Next up, we have Mr. Eric Lenz. Good evening, Mr. Lenz. Please provide us your name one more time and your address and your comments, please.
Yeah, my name is Eric Lenz, but before I disclose my address, I was wondering if I was able to ask if it is public information that, if I asked that if Mr. Davis is a resident of Oshkosh or a taxpayer of the city? I did my own research, and I know some of the answers, but is that something that is a secret?
I'll answer. If you're all right with me answering.
Please do.
Sure. Dr. Davis is a resident of the Oshkosh Area School District, and he is a taxpayer in the Oshkosh Area School District.
All right.
Can I make a point of order?
I guess.
Point of order, yes.
This isn't a discussion.
We don't talk about employees.
So, we don't typically answer questions in public forums, so.
Okay.
We don't discuss employees.
No, that's fine. And I just, I would like to state that everyone else here but Mr. Davis, your addresses are available. I found them all. They're easily accessible. Anyone in the city that's a taxpayer, that information's down at the City Hall, it's easily found, it's public record. Anyone can know it. I've got two addresses for you. I just find it ironic that in order for me to speak, I have to display my address, and upon me trying to find out if Mr. Davis is a taxpayer in this town, it was kind of a, a little bit of a journey for me, you know, kind of a secretive thing. So, I just feel like it's telling me your information, but you can't know mine. You know where I'm coming from?
Please stop the, can we stop the clock for a second?
That's fine. And that's, I just wanted to know. That's it. I'm not going to push it.
We don't discuss employees.
All right, hold on. Can, may I please direct this? Thank you.
We need to follow protocols, Mr. Peachell. This is not a discussion session. Thank you.
I asked a question, I got an answer. I'm fine, I'm not going to push any further.
So, if you, again, if you wish to have that question answered further in a different way, you can reach out to one of us, but the rule of thumb is that we do not discuss elements of a personal nature to, related to the employees of the Oshkosh Area School District. That is, that is the official answer to your question.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
Right. Now, you've been afforded a little bit more time than what typically is.
And you don't have to give it to me, that's your call.
So, I would like to put a minute back on the clock.
Again, point of order. We have not earned an address.
Correct. So, please state your name, address, and your comments, please. Well, I'm sorry. Let's be fair. So, I think it was actually at about 1:25 when I saw that.
Okay. My name's Eric Lenz, I live at 1847 Plymouth Street. The issue I want to speak out against tonight is the transgender agendas that are being taught in the Oshkosh Area School District. I'm here to speak out against them tonight. They're being infiltrated and taught to our youth in this district. These are dangerous, brainwashing agendas constructed and forced by, believe it or not, the United Nations to all countries, especially the United States. This is how these things work, if you do the research. Our nation then passes the agendas down to the state, and then the states pass them down to the local communities, and the local communities, like the school board here, do what they're told with no pushback or question from anyone. Let me be clear, I'm not trying to take anyway anyone's rights here. I have no hatred for anyone with transgender identity problems or not problems, but issues, whatever you want to call them. I have no hatred towards anyone. I just believe that this is a very slippery slope that we're going down, we're teaching these sort of things, and this kind of relates to what Mr. Took was speaking about, that we're teaching these things in our school. I am very disheartened that I am the minority that speaks out about this. It's been clear to me that my pleas with the board over the last two years have gone unheard. An agenda is an agenda, and it will not be swayed unless there are numbers, which is an obvious problem with only seven people watching the stream right now. And almost an empty room, there's no one here. So, in my opinion, the Oshkosh Area School District parents have spoken. They don't care because they're not here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There is, that concludes non-agenda-related public forum. Again, repeating, there is no one on the agenda for agenda-related public forum, so we will move on to the workshop that is at hand. The workshop's title is Board and Community Engagement, to kind of be led by myself and Dr. Herzog, but it also, we wanted to kind of lead with Strategic Plan Number Five related to communication. And Ms. Nieman, please come on up and just kind of give us a brief report on, related to strategic, strategic item number five.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So, as I detailed in the report, what I did was go through our communication efforts related to Goal Number Five and specifically how they relate to community engagement. So, within it, you'll see both the things that we have been able to accomplish in recent years as well as the sort of next items up and priority areas. I think the important thing to obviously understand is ongoing community engagement efforts are a part of pretty much every district function in some capacity with each of our staff members and district leaders engaging with stakeholders in a variety of different ways. Separate from that, I think, is the conversation of how do we engage our community on a more regular and more engaging way, so focusing on that two-way communication. You know, we did put forth some initial suggestions that, again, we're continuing to move forward, being with, making information more accessible to all stakeholders, including families and non-families of the district, as well as trying to communicate more than just one time a year or when there's a certain activity happening. In addition to that, looking to do more engagement activities such as the Strategic Plan Update that occurred last week. I think one of the exciting things to take away from that is the suggestions brought forth, and I think that's going to continue to be a priority is, you know, we can't necessarily say this is what communication or engagement needs to look like unless we're constantly asking what our community is wanting from us and using surveying and feedback loops to, again, get that, so that we know what is our community interested in learning from or engaging with us and how can we best meet that.
Is there any questions related to her presentation?
I just have one comment. I saw, Katie, that you are also on the docket in August, and I know that you're working on a comprehensive plan as far as assistance and whatever. Is that kind of when you'll roll out what you'd like to see as far as an assistant or the storytelling and who will be helping you with that?
Yeah, I think that's, my work is continuing on that front. I am hopefully going to be able to make some significant gains over the summer to really identify what that is. I think it's interesting to note that, you know, community engagement could very well be a portion of that. I wouldn't refer to it as an assistant because I think there's greater opportunity of, as far as what does our district need from a storytelling lens and an engagement lens. So, simple answer, yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. So, go on, go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
I was a little bit slow. I really liked the targeted points that you have under Major Points Item C. And we've talked about in the past things like communicating out to the internal stakeholders, the parents and staff regarding these meetings and others. And I also like the notion of a key communicator's network, including external communicators as well as Communication Marketing Advisory Group. Knowing what our community would like to know would be very helpful in terms of targeting information. I don't know what the numbers are right now, but it used to be somewhere in the vicinity of only 25% to 27% of the people in a community have children in school. The rest of them, or the rest of us, might have had children who were in school or unfortunately never had the blessings of having our own children, but we, so I've been, I've always been interested in what we can do to reach out to those who don't currently have children. I have a number of friends who have children who have gone through the school system, they don't have a direct connection anymore, but they're very interested in musicals and plays and sports activities. And so, for me, that would be an area I would like to see us get more information on or make it more readily available on our website for people to find that information. I think that if people could see the great things that are done by our teachers in the arts, in music, art fairs, madrilles, musicals, it would, it would go a long way to better communicating the, many, many positive things going on in the school district, and I think we'd have greater attendance. And anybody who is a performer always likes to have people in the audience, so I think that would be one of the things that we could look to enhance.
Absolutely. I agree.
Go ahead.
I only have one comment. There's a lot of information out there regarding the district from a lot of different sources. PTO groups, you know, schools own Facebook pages, and, you know, there's a lot of stories to tell, and it's a big job to communicate all that information effectively. So, I'm really looking forward to your plan in August to see how we, you know, move forward and bridge that information together, and that, you know, this is a very important part of the district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next portion of this workshop is not going to be a lengthy portion, but it's just going to be, one of the, one of the things that we've been talking about through, like our self-evaluation, is looking for ways that we can advance our knowledge of what we do as board members in the community, and to look for ways that we can be more engaging in that, in that way. So, and, you know, in all reality, we are engaged in our, in our different ways. You know, some of us are parents, so we engage at our schools through that way. We're invited in at some of the schools to tour and to be part of some classes. We all, and we each all have our interests through our committees that we sit on as well, engaging the mission of the school district as well. But one of the things that, that I've been encouraged to try to do, and it comes from being at the state education conferences, is looking for a way for board members to specifically engage outwardly more in a more present sense in the community, like at community events. But at the same time, also create opportunities where board members can be experts as board members, and informing the community about what we do. And that style of how we do that, I'm not deciding that, that's part of our discussion that we can have here today. Some of the topics that we talked about would, could be created off our calendar that we have and everything, but, but just in general, just trying to create a path for us to be more engaged about what we do and how we do it and just being out in the community more. So, I think the really easy part is to talk about where can we do some of this stuff. So, and my biggest example that I, that I suggest is that stuff. So, and my biggest example that I, that I suggest is that, and the school district does this already in, in the sense of having a booth at the, at the local farmer's market and us playing a role in that. I've reached out to Michelle at the farmer's market already to kind of engage that discussion of what it looks like. Not trying to take away from what the district does, but looking for a way that we may be able to collaborate and administration members and board members be available at booths, you know, throughout the farmer's market throughout the year. And so, so I have some of the specifics related to that. And I guess, you know, just thinking about that event, is that, is that an event that board members would be interested in signing up to be at, at a booth or table during the farmer's market? So just in general, just kind of looking to hear from everyone on that. I got some nodding.
Yes, I'm all in. I would love to do that.
I think so.
Okay. So, and I know our schedules, you know, we all have different schedules and everything and that, and that plays a factor in it. So, so I guess what I'm hearing is that let's go ahead to, go ahead and put together a plan, at least for the farmer's market and see where we can share a booth with administration leaders or even teachers or staff that may be interested being there. So.
I have one question.
Yes.
Right? Because we're all individually elected.
Correct.
Right? So, when we're at this booth, we're going to have people coming up to talk to us about a lot of different things. Or potentially, right? Could be about our own opinions, whatnot. So how is this booth going to advocate for just the districts? You know, because the administration, and there's a set message that we set as board members, and then we're individuals as well. Right? So I kind of want to be, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that there's two different parts and roles there, you know, if you know what I mean.
Well, what was, what was your question?
I mean, when we're.
I know what, I know what you're saying. Because I'm looking right at this. Right in our packet, in our folders, it says a board member lacks individual power. So like when I think of going to a farmer's market, I think if it is as an advertising opportunity with like the communications director where we're trying to, you know, tell our story and get people to enroll their kids in our school district, I love it. But I'm also a little cautious, I guess might be the word I'd use, because I understand that as an individual board member, I have no power or authority. Our power is as a board.
As a whole.
So it's not, I still didn't give a question, but I think that's.
So.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm.
I think. I have the same thoughts, yeah.
You know, I think the reality is, is that, you know, we're out there as, as board members as a, as a whole around the, my thought would be that we would be there as board members built around, you know, our guiding principles of putting students first in regards to that. Do, I think what you're saying is that going to be the appropriate venue for you to be able to speak freely as a board member about when someone engages you?
I mean, when, when someone engages me, my opinion of how putting students first might be different than yours. And, but how is that representative of the district as a whole? That's my thought process.
Sure. All right. So we have a couple people indicating questions. So I'm going to go with Ms. Wyman and then Ms. Carlin.
When I think about us teaming with administration, I think it's really important that we're all in this together. I do worry about putting any more weekend time on a teacher or administration. I think they put in their time and even if it's, you know, it's just one more thing to do. I think right now, I'm copacetic with everyone, but you would sure hate to get to a point where a teacher maybe wasn't saying the same thing as a school board member. So I guess maybe it's the farmer's market concept. I, you know, if there was a booth at, at the chamber and we're all promoting attendance into the Oshkosh area school district, getting kids in.
For the goal.
We're there for a single goal. I find that easier than putting a lot of people with a lot of different workloads and a lot of different things out there at a farmer's market where the sole reason someone's going to come up to you is with a gripe.
So.
Right.
Yep, go ahead.
Well, I, I was, I was just going to offer a different perspective. When we, when you first pitched the idea, I was thinking that it was an opportunity for us to educate the community on what we do as school board members. And the theme of the table would be what does the school board do? And, you know, we are seven people with one voice. So there is not one voice that is louder than any of the other voices. We are one collective body. So when I picture this table, I picture an opportunity to say, what does the school board do? You know, do we make curriculum decisions? And we can, we would have like, you know, brochures or handouts or something that outline the responsibilities of the school board and what we can and cannot do. And if people come to us, us with gripes, then we do what we always do, which is have you talked to your principal? And have you gone through the proper chain of command? Because that is our job as school board members. So, and I, I get that weekends and that we already all spend a lot of time at events already. So I'm open to doing something similar like at a herd game or any kind of thing. But, you know, I, I do think it's important for us to take time to educate the community on what we do and what is in our responsibilities and what is not in our responsibilities. Because there's, there's, there's a lot of complaints and gripes that we get that it's not our, it's not, that's not our job. Our job is policy and our job is overseeing the superintendent. So, thank you.
Dr. Davis, Mr. Carlin, and Ms. Herzog.
Yeah. So I think from a, from an administrative standpoint, or really just from our entire staff standpoint, I just want to make sure that whatever opportunities we do engage in, they, they have a specific purpose specifically for staff. So when, when I'm thinking about, you know, the, the value, what we could potentially bring, again, around student enrollment, both student enrollment for in the district or in a rec department program, you know, sometimes it's, it's difficult me, you know, navigating through four, raising four girls at the same time and two jobs. Sometimes Saturday morning is actually a pretty good time. My wife and I are out like grabbing something at the farmer's market and everything else is a little bit quiet. Girls are asleep. It's not a bad time to maybe sign up for something. And so, you know, that was my thought, that there might be some value in, in something like that. Again, the enrollment, you know, the enrollment piece, just trying to be more accessible, you know, getting into neighborhoods, you know, farmer. So when I think of farmer's market, I think that, that might be something relatively simple that we could set up just from an accessibility standpoint for the community. But I would want to make sure that we are, we're going with a particular purpose into that space. Otherwise, you know, we, we could, you know, to Ms. Wyman's point, we, we could burn up the entire summer and the weekends doing all kinds of different events, but we want to just make sure we're deliberate about what that is.
Exactly.
Mr. Carlin.
That's, I guess, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking. I like the idea of being out there, but I, I don't like the idea of us being out there without a purpose because that could, that could turn quickly.
Ms. Herzog.
Thank you. I know that a former superintendent in Green Bay, Dan Nared, gained some publicity for doing this years ago in the Green Bay area. I wasn't part of that. I only can rely on what I saw in the evening news. But from what I understand, it was successful and it was well received. My understanding is that the farmer's market typically has a small number of areas, a booth or two, that they make available to nonprofits and they rotate that. So it's not like it would be every week. And even the time could be split. It wouldn't have to be the entire time. But I, I really appreciate the thoughtful comments that have been heard around the table in that we should have a purpose and we, we have to, we have to remember that we're one of seven. And if somebody wants to know our opinion, we can give our opinion, but we need to make sure that that's understood, that that's what it is. We're not speaking for the board.
Correct.
However, if it reflects, you know, what curriculum did you recently adopt or what schools are being assisted this summer in referendum money, that, those would be factual things that we could answer if we had, had that information available to us. So I think that could be beneficial. I think we also have to be careful that we stay above the line and that we stay in the policy realm and not assume the role of administration in terms of responding to things. But I, I think this has great value for visibility of the school district and for people who maybe don't want to come into this building or some other district building, but the farmer's market might be more comfortable space in which to interact. I think that could, could be helpful.
Sure. So, again, I'm not married to, to a specific concept. I'm, I'm married to the idea of doing something different than what we're doing right now, other than just sitting in our boardroom and disposing, not disposing, it sounds like we're, making policy decision-making stuff is great. We all love that. That's why we're here. But that's not all about who we are and what we do. So it's just wanting to create opportunities. And so I'll, again, I don't think we need to labor this comment. I think, you know, creating, you know, something like at the farmer's market with a purpose, I think is really important. And that sounds like something that the district and the board can be on the same page about. And it even sounds like enrollment might be that.
Yes.
That, that, that issue or that, that purpose. So, so that's good. I, I do want to say that it's really hard for me to go to public events like the farmer's market because I can, I can go with my family and look and, and put aside family time to doing that. But the second I enter farmer, enter the farmer's market, I'm engaged with someone. I'm constantly being, I'm constantly talking to someone. Sometimes I don't even get to go to the farmer's market. I begin, begin and stay at the farmer's market and my family meets me on their way back out. So, so I, so for me, in that, in that purpose, I'd rather just set up a booth, you know, and, and have those conversations in, you know, in a predetermined spot because that's more efficient for me and it creates a clear expectation with my family that I'm there for that. Though I do enjoy being there with my family, but many times I, that's what, that's what ends up happening to me. I think you even volunteer sometimes. I think I've seen Dr. Herzog volunteering at the market as well. And so.
Pie on the porch every Saturday.
I just make the pies.
So, and with that, there are benefits to us volunteering with the market that may actually give us more affordable booth time throughout the year as well. So, so that's one of the other elements of that too. So, so just putting that out there, that sounds like a good springboard. And I don't even think we need to go into a lot of other topics. The other, the other event that I would put in your minds, and I put it in Dr. Davis's mind and Dr. Herzog's mind, is that there's a national night out event and it's basically a neighborhood associations across the city that convene on the same day every August. I think like it's August 8th or it's usually like the second, the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday in September.
No, it's usually August.
August.
Yep. And, and those are great opportunities. Sometimes those are neighborhoods that are flush with children or those are neighborhoods that, you know, have an older population or a diverse population of people. And I know I've been talking to Dr. Davis about strategically being present at some of these. It might be good for us to look at that as being one of those collective events. Maybe we spread out, because there's usually between 12 and 15 of them in the city. You know, I used to pride myself on making it to all of them, but that's a lot of driving and, you know, and all over the place. So, and they enjoy seeing elected leaders at these events as well. So I think that's another opportunity for us that we could block out each of us. You know, if one of us lives on the west side of town, that person maybe hits the west side neighborhood associations or the east side hits the east side. And then, Dr. Davis, you could assign, if it's, if, if they're willing to, you know, administration members to kind of be present, you know, with, you know, with that. So it's, again, you know, we stay on task and our purpose is there for doing something like that. And again, enrollment can be very much a focus at these events as well. So if that's, if that's the, if that's the purpose that we want to get behind, you know, say for the next year, let's build a, let's build an engagement plan around that, that, that we're actively a part of. So.
I have one question.
Yes.
I know that we're primarily a non-paper organization, but I was wondering if we have brochures at the CBB and at the chamber, something like why choose the OASD? If I were buying a home, those are two places that I would probably go into to look at what the community offers, to look at the amenities of the community and maybe a nice tagline, tag for our school district.
Building community through education.
Exactly.
Yeah. I think we have some of those materials now, so we'll have to, to update them. But I, I think that's a good, that's a good idea. We had, we had some materials out at the Chamber of Commerce Expo. We had a booth, we had a booth there. So some of those materials were out. But certainly those are things that we can, we can update. And, you know, if, if we're talking strategy and can get like, you know, us maybe a singular purpose out there, we can also tailor some of those communications around that.
I think it's been at least eight to 10 years, but there used to be a packet of materials that were intended to go to realtors. And I know there were meetings with realtors and they were asked, what, what kinds of things do people want to know about the district? And of course, you get so much online today, but if they had something they could hand us to a prospective new resident, that might be helpful. The other thought I had was, we have a lot of service clubs in the community from Altrusa to Kiwanis to Rotary and, and the list goes on. There's League of Women Voters, lots of other community groups. They all have, they typically have programs and food. And so they're looking for people to come and, and speak. So Dr. Davis thought that maybe a board member could come along and just talk about briefly what boards do. That might be a way to.
That's a good idea.
Get the word out too, in terms of what do boards do. My comments actually are going to piggyback well off of that because I'm looking at the report and then seeing and undersee, hold community forums and town hall meetings. And I think that that is an important thing for us to do because at these board meetings, we can't have the back and forth with the public because they, conversations haven't been publicly noted. And I do think the role of the school board would be a really good, I lost the word, where was it here? Forum or town hall meeting to have, maybe like in the fall or sometime. I, because I can see why Ms. Carlin was going there. I wouldn't want to do that at the farmer's market. I think that would be a good one for us to host, to let people come. Another one, and this I got this idea from when I was at the state school board association convention, but a budget workshop. And I know every, I think it's October, we do have a special meeting for our budget where people can come in and speak. But I think it, the recommendation there, one of the trainings I went to was to hold similar to our strategic plan forum, to hold one on the budget, to help the public, to really break it down at a simple level, to help the public understand that budget before we, you know, produce it in October and vote on it.
Sure.
So those would be my two suggestions for potential future town hall meetings, much like the strategic plan one. Role of the school board and a budget, budget 101, I think is what they called it.
Yeah. I think, I don't know if it's my turn to speak. I think there's two things that we really have to identify with this plan. Purpose and feasibility. Purpose, what we want to achieve and then how we can actually achieve those, that initiative. What gives us the most, you know, because I've heard now, and I agree with all of them. I wish we could be at all of that stuff. But probably like combine 50, 60 events. You know what I mean?
Which would be wonderful.
If we all cloned ourselves and whatever. But, you know, purpose and feasibility. Where, what, what, what is our purpose going to be in these interactions? Because I, I believe interaction is great. You know, I want to have interaction with as many of the stakeholders in this district as possible. Right? But what is, what is the purpose of that action? And what is the best method towards us having those interactions provide value to our mission to better the community?
And how do we measure it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think everything that you guys, that all of you have brought forward are very valid. And I think it's really important to include that when we, when we start creating the plan. So I, and I'm not, I can't disagree with anything that both of you just kind of added together in regards to that. But, and the forums, service organizations, those are things that we. And the forums, service organizations, those are things that we can do as needed and as they arise as well too. So it's not something like, if one of us can go to a service organization with Ryan or if any of us are part of that, part of a service organization, we can already talk to that organization about doing that, especially if, you know, you already go to that organization. So there's, I just think there's lots of opportunities just around communication. And that's where I kind of, I kind of wanted to start, was just to kind of create a plan and opportunities for us to be in those spots, to be able to do that. So, yes.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I think coming out of COVID gives us a kind of a reset on being able to get ourselves back out there. And I don't want to be reactive to, but, you know, a lot of the public don't, they think we're just closed up in a room and make decisions and we're not out there. I just love the idea of being out there and letting us control that story.
Sure.
And not control the story, but tell the story, right? And being able to do all of that. So I think it's wonderful and I, you know, I think maybe that is, you know, we've been able to, I mean, for a lot of it, we've been stuck, closed off until recently from even people in this room, so.
So I guess here's, I think my suggestion, unless we want to keep on talking about this, we can, but I'd like to, I'd like to bring it to a close.
I do have one comment I'd like to make, but you can go ahead and then finish mine.
No, you can go. Maybe it needs to be included in my closure.
All right, well, thank you. So I was thinking about this workshop today and I was also thinking about the school perceptions, board self-evaluation that we did in a winter timeframe and that we will do again in May, by May 1st, and then we will have a workshop on that. So I was trying to figure out how to marry those because to me, they both deal with communication. This deals with communication, telling our story. And also, how do we, how do we prepare all of us to feel comfortable with questions we might ask? So I went through the strategic, excuse me, not the strategic plan. I went through the school perceptions, self-evaluation and pulled out some of the items on there. I'm not saying we should do these, this is just a suggestion. What's in there in terms of the first four, it was suggested for items one through four and items nine through 12, that boards, effective boards have updates on those areas on an ongoing basis so that we're up to date on what those are about. So I was wondering about, in preparation for being out in the community, having under administrative reports, just a brief five-minute report at a board meeting or maybe in one of our committee meetings where it would fit in, to just give some, some of us some additional background on what's going on, like for example, what's going on in gifted talented education? What's going on with vocational and technical education and apprenticeships in the district? If we wanted a longer staff report, as we're doing right now, we could ask for that. But I was just thinking of little snippets that would just give an overview of what's going on in the district. It would help us, I think, as a group, better understand what the scope is of what's going on in the district and maybe prepare us to answer questions, whether it's in some formal setting like a farmer's market or just when you run into somebody in the grocery store or at the baseball game. So, just a suggestion. And these might not, these might not be relevant after we look at the updated school perception survey results that we will be discussing in June. But anyway, just a thought.
I think it'll be important, again, in whatever, you know, the board decides, you know, from a topic standpoint, we certainly can provide. I think the important part from a administrative staff standpoint is being able to get it on a calendar and have it be kind of a predictable type of cycle. Because what's difficult is, you know, with everything else that we have going on, to be able to, you know, come and give updates, you know, on multiple items. Not that we can't give snippets, but it starts to turn into a little bit more of a reactionary piece. So I would just ask, and I think this is very possible, I like your idea, to be able to just be really, again, be strategic about it. And as we look at putting together our calendar, if we identify priorities, I think we can identify 12 months' worth of, or, you know, the priorities and fit them within the calendar 12 months out. Because most of the work that we're doing administratively, we're doing most of it three months ahead of time, you know, as we're rolling. And so that, there's, you know, a lot of work that goes into that. And we'd want to make sure that, you know, that we're complete and that we can, we can schedule it. So that would just be my request from a board standpoint, wherever we land, we have some time and, you know, we have the ability to calendar, which I think we can. Most of, most of the time, you're going to get, you know, a pretty predictable cycle of, you know, when the topics are relevant. For example, you know, before the budget meeting, having the finance town hall makes a lot of sense, right? And so, like, we can look at 12 months in a very predictable way and have an idea what relevant topics would be and then be able to calendar that. So administratively, we would know, you know, here's the date when, you know, this topic's going to come. Or I think more, you know, maybe as important or more important from a board standpoint as you're in the grocery store or at the farmer's market or you're taking a thousand questions on something and somebody asks, you know, I'd really like a curriculum update. What you can do is go back to the calendar and you can point to, that's great, we're going to do that in November and we'd love to have you be part of that. So we have a place to put the events. Because what's difficult is, and this hasn't happened, but I'm speaking from 12 years of experience in prior places, what's difficult is like, hey, I talked to somebody at the grocery store about gifted and talented, could we get that on the next agenda to be able to like report out on? And then we ping pong back and forth. Like I said, behind the scenes, we're three months ahead, you know, for us doing our work. So the predictability is really important. And I think just the effectiveness of that message and allows you to have a place to know, we're always going to talk about alternative ed programs or this is when we're going to talk about gifted and talented programs, to know that it's not going to get missed, but also have a place to put it that, that's really, you know, I think strategic. So that would be one of my recommendations.
And then, just to kind of, if there are other topics that you would like to see get calendared, within all of this, I would just pass them on to Dr. Davis in regards to, because Barbie put together a really good list here, but there might be other things.
Oh, absolutely. I mainly focused on the red areas, where we have opportunities for growth, not that we don't, and the green areas, but I thought those would be a starting point. But it wasn't meant to be a top-down list, it was just meant to encourage some just conversation about what do we want to know as a board and how can we be more effective overall and with whatever topics we need to show growth on as a board.
So, just, go ahead, was there more?
I just had one more thing and it kind of goes along with this, but one thing that we've lost in the past three years is Ashkosh for Education, which is a group of community advocates. And Dr. Davis and I had talked about that. So it's kind of nice to have a two-fold one. You have all the board members saying our story and then you have community advocates that have heard from Dr. Davis saying exactly the same things because many times they talk to board members and are going, yeah, okay, they've got their own story, they have to say that. But when you're actually talking to community members that are saying, no, this is what's really happening, I think that says a lot for the district. So I encourage you to continue in a little different format we were talking about. So it was, it just hits from another angle.
What is the status of Ashkosh for Education?
It doesn't exist right now.
Okay.
So, any last chance?
I have one, yeah, I'm sorry, I know we need to move on. But in my opinion, number 15 is the one thing that we should all be doing at all times and that's being a champion for the district. I like having information about this other stuff, but when, first of all, I wear a hat and sunglasses to the farmer's market, which I highly recommend, so you can actually get some shopping done. But my other thing is, is that, you know, I really try not to go below the line. And some of this data, it's, well, it's great to have, I think it's very important to stick to our role, which is, you know what, that's a great question, you know? Here's Dr. Davis's number. Here's, you know, we all have the cards with his number on it. So I love having all this information, I really, really do. But I just, I want to stay mindful and focused on what our jobs are. And our jobs are overseeing superintendent and policy. And yes, we need to know all of this stuff, but the one thing on this list that we all can be doing at all times without going under any line is number 15. So that's my.
Ms. Carlin just channeled her inner Ted Nitski.
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's duly noted, so, thank you. So just to kind of close this up, at a future board meeting, I'll bring back kind of perspective schedule of engagements that we might be able to move forward on. They'll be coupled with a purpose. And I think you, as a board, we as a board and with Dr. Davis have indicated what one of those purposes would be. And so, and we will try to understand and build in the feasibility as well as ways to measure the performance of that, those levels of interaction. And then, Dr. Herzog and I will work with Dr. Davis to kind of work on that calendar of topics and figure out ways to keep in mind what, the element that Ms. Carlin just kind of reminded us about as well. So, is everyone kind of good with the openness of that plan at this point? It's more than what we had, than what we started with, right? So, and I will shoot to provide an update at next month's, in one of next month's board meetings. Okay? All right. Any questions left?
No.
All right. Well, thank you all for engaging in that, in that conversation. And let's move on to our, so next we have up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been furnished, the board has been furnished background material on each item or has, as it has been discussed at a previous meeting. These items are typically acted upon with one vote without discussion. So.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wyman, seconded by Carlin.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Wright.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Karin.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Solachi.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
All right, thank you. We have no individually considered resolutions. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? No? Okay. Any announcements from board members? Go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I'd like to give kudos and encouragement in line with that number 15 on that list I just shared, to our dozens and dozens of high school students who will be competing this Saturday in the state solo ensemble contest, the music solo ensemble contest at UWO Ashkosh, and all the teachers who have, worked so hard to prepare them for great success at that event. So, good luck, everybody, at the state solo ensemble music contest at UWO this weekend.
I guess, for me, I just want to make sure that I, again, thank Eileen Fitzpatrick for her service to the district and Sherry. Without both of the efforts that both of you put in on behalf of the board and the administration, we might struggle up here sometimes.
Right. No question about it.
We might struggle. So, and then finally, I also want to remind the board and the community that Representative Gordon Hints is being inducted into the Ashkosh North Hall of Fame this Friday. There is a community ceremony that starts at 10:00 and there'll be a luncheon at 11:30 at Ashkosh North High School. Thank you. Anything else?
No, to your turn?
Well, we can't do that yet. We have to adjourn to executive session. So after I read this, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. To adjourn to executive session to consider the disciplinary data of a specific person, state statute 19.85, parent one, parent F, A, review the expulsion recommendation from an expulsion hearing officer for a high school student who engaged in conduct constituting a repeat refusal or neglect to obey the rules, Wisconsin State Statute 120.13, parent one, parent C, parent E. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, that is moved by Herzog and seconded by, who was it? Mr. Karin. And that would be for a motion to adjourn to executive session. Please call the roll.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Karin.
Aye.
Heschel.
Aye.
Solachi.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Will you adjourn to executive session?
Thank you.